In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has given adequate notice of this meeting by having published the date, time, and place of this meeting in the Home News Tribune and has posted notice of this meeting at the Highland Park Middle School, 330 Wayne Street, Highland Park, New Jersey. Lynda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Aversa?
Here.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Here.
Ms. Bull?
Here.
Mr. Dietz?
Here.
Ms. Hughes?
Here.
Ms. Poynter Titus? Mr. Ross? Ms. Sherber?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 9th regular public and executive sessions?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Upstain.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Adam, were there any communications?
I have two communications I'd like to share with the board. One is a reminder that the New Jersey School Boards Annual Workshop will be conducted from October 22nd through October 24th. The deadline was today, so I have not heard from anyone. If anyone has strong -- the last day to make hotel reservation was today. Certainly, if anything is left and you want to go, I wish you would contact my secretary, Janet Becker, as soon as possible. Also, the second was an email that everyone should have received from Christopher Jones of New Jersey School Boards Association regarding the SDA, or School Development Authority Assessment, and the FY 2014 budget. If you recall, the School Development Authority Assessment had been increased and districts had objected, and as a result, it was reduced back to the prior year's assessment level. And they were just informing districts that the Assemblyman who was in charge of this effort was Assemblyman Patrick -- is it Diagnan?
Diagnan.
Diagnan, who is the Assemblyman for our district. So they just had offered the opportunity for districts to thank Assemblyman Diagnan for his efforts, and I just wanted to share that in case anyone wanted to offer any resolutions. They had some suggested language. If you would like, we could present something for the next meeting, or we can just say in the public, "Thank you." That's all.
Does any --
Well, you know what? We in Highland Park are lucky to have three representatives at the state level that are great proponents of public education. I see no reason why we shouldn't officially thank him for his efforts in this matter. He's up for election this year, and people who care about education should know that he has been working toward keeping district budgets from, you know, imploding.
He was very supportive of our district when we were dealing with the charter school issue as well. Does anybody else have an opinion on this?
I agree with Ann.
Okay. Maybe we can prepare a resolution for next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Tim, could we have the superintendent's report?
So we have a number of events that are coming up this week. Tomorrow is the back-to-school night at the high school. On the 30th, we have Middle School Picture Day. On October 2nd, we have the Middle School Back-to-School Night. On the 3rd of October is Irving's Back-to-School Night. And we also have HESPA testing at the high school, which will occur from October 1st to October 3rd. We also have one HIB incident to report at the high school. We had an invitation for all of our buildings to participate in the park pilot testing, and we have declined to do so because it would be an increase of testing on our students. It also falls at the same time as NJASK and all of the testing that's done for high school students in the spring, such as AP testing. And so we have declined to participate for this year. The park assessment does not go into effect until the following year, and we felt that both the district's readiness to implement this, plus our concern of over-testing students, took precedent. Two things that we've been doing to try and get feedback from staff, we've put out surveys to staff on instructional practices. We actually had great turnout, more than 90% of the staff responding, and so we're using that information to determine professional development and meet the needs of our teachers. And another opportunity we've created is a leadership academy to try and identify leaders within the district to be able to build capacity of our current staff. And so we're -- in the process, we had over 20 interested parties who would like to participate in a voluntary set of sessions to talk about both the district practices and to improve themselves within the Department of Leadership. So those will be things that we'll be setting upcoming meetings for, and also looking at getting feedback from the staff in reference to strategic planning, what staff believe are the needs within the district. And so we're trying to increase the communication, really get the input from them, so that we can kind of put together some rough ideas that we can bring into the board and to the larger community to make sure that we have both community feedback and then be able to narrow down some of those goals as we move forward this year and really create a long-term strategic plan. That's all that I have.
Thank you. And the student update?
Regarding the new study hall rules, students feel that during their study hall period, they should not have to be constantly engaged if they finish their homework for the day. They see the skill packets as a waste of time and energy, as well as paper. Furthermore, taking away the students' privileges of chatting with other classmates may obstruct them from receiving aid on a concept, homework assignment, lesson, et cetera, and should be enforced less stringently. And just following up from that, they feel that they should be rewarded for finishing their work, not punished with the skill packets.
Also, regarding the new rule, which I think was enacted on Monday, forcing teachers to be constantly physically active during the class period, a lot of students and teachers feel that they should be allowed to sit down if students are completing a test, an in-class essay, or any other lengthy in-class assignment, and having them walk continuously around the room is too much of a burden for teachers. It does not create any strong benefits that we can see of in the classroom, at least.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments on that?
I think that just Tim should take attention to those and see what -- report back to the students and see -- and have some sort of response to their questioning. I don't think it should go unanswered.
Right. I think that we're trying to establish here more of a forum for getting input from the students to the board. This is a great opportunity to hear what's going on in the schools, and I'm sure --
I just don't -- I don't have enough information to answer any of those questions.
Oh, no, no, no.
I don't want them to feel like that they just made a statement and not have their concerns answered in some capacity or explained in why they are being -- why the rules are being put into place the way they are.
Well, were you actually asking why, or you're just -- we're actually -- we're just bringing these to our -- I actually didn't even know about these two new rules. No, we're just bringing it to your attention. So just so that you brought it to our attention is actually a good thing for us to --
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. If there's anybody here who would like to comment? Okay. Curriculum -- oh, thank you, Ann.
The curriculum committee met tonight, and we discussed just a couple of items. We talked about a proposed research project that Rutgers graduate student would like to involve the district in, and we looked at a list of some proposed field trips. And so with that, I would like to move items two through seven.
Are you doing eight on the --
An eight on the addendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just had a quick question about the -- one of the field trips. The ones to Washington DC, are they open to just the teen center, or are they the full school?
I think it's just the teen center.
Okay.
And they're financed in that way as well.
That's what I figured. I just wanted to --
But the students can sign up.
Any student can sign up, but it's financed -- well, that's even better. Any student can sign up, and we don't have to pay for it out of our general fund.
What do you want to do with that?
Oh, and so the other thing that we'd like to raise is -- so are you going to --
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing that's come up, I have raised it in a meeting prior to this, about the LEGO Robotics Program. There is a Schedule B position in the high school to supervise a LEGO Robotics course, and one of our instructors is doing that. In the middle school, the teen center director is saying that she will run the program for middle school students in LEGO Robotics through the teen center. Understanding that the interest in STEM careers or interest in science, technology, engineering, and math is beneficial to feed that really early on, so that the interest is built and students can develop it as they go through the schools. So teacher -- no, no, parents approached us about having this program in the Bartle School. In order to do that, we need to pay for licenses for the materials and also for a Schedule B position to run that. So we're putting that out there and just seeing what -- how people feel about that. I mean, that is something that was not in the Bartle budget for this year.
On the other hand, Lynda tells me that it's about -- or actually, maybe it was Karen who said it's about $3,000 in total. That includes the licenses and Schedule B, and that we could probably find that money in order to start the program. Actually, it would be great if we could have it this year rather than waiting another year, so.
I think we've had considerable interest in programs like this in the past, and I think it'd be a great use of funds to do it, especially with the breakage that we've had this year. We should be able to find the money to put this program into place.
Is this a -- do we have any details? Is it once a week? Does it need, as part of the after-school program, do students who are not in the after-school program still stay for just this?
I think that was the intent, but I mean, it may depend on who is actually running it. I mean, the parents originally anticipated a 10-week program, meeting once a week. They applied to the Ed Foundation for a grant, but the Ed Foundation does not pay for supervision or the teacher, and so they did not get that grant. So now they're looking for the alternative, but they wanted something running in the winter for 10 weeks, so. But as I say, that would be -- have to be worked out, you know, with the teacher.
But I certainly don't think that, you know, involvement in the after-school program would be a -- would be a prerequisite.
Quite, no, yeah.
Are you looking to move it tonight?
Well, if there are no objections on the part of the administration.
But I have a question. Is it the after-school program, don't they do homework the first hour?
If it's going to run during the after-school program, it would have to be scheduled as such. I would suggest it not be part of the after-school program. I would suggest that if after-school students wished to attend, that they would not be in after-school during that time and pay for after-school during that time, because with the Chinese program as well, I think it's too much scheduling, because yes, they do do homework. It goes in cycles. One group does homework, the other one has snack, the other one's outside, and then it rotates, so it'd be kind of difficult. So I think if you have a parent who sends their child to the after-school program, would like their child to attend that, they would not go to the after-school program until that was over. So that would be my suggestion for, you know, keeping things kind of sane.
Is that how after-school band, for example, works as well?
Yes, that does not run as part of the after-school program. It's a lesson after school, and then if they're finished, if they go home, they go home, and if not, they can go to the after-school program, but they don't pay for the after-school program during that time.
I think this is a great idea.
Yeah.
I think it sounds wonderful. I hate to be like a downer on the topic. I mean, I think the idea of doing more programming at Bartle to have something like this happening at the Bartle School is really exciting, but from a -- to find the money this year sets a precedent that we have to find the money for it every single year in the coming years. I mean, if the money's not there, it won't get paid for, but --
Well, it's a discreet program. It's a 10-week program. It's not, you know, it's a discreet program, so.
Right, but we would want -- I mean, it's the kind of thing, once you do it once, you're going to want to continue doing it. And I -- my only thought is, as exciting as it sounds, is this the kind of thing that we should be considering more holistically when we talk about budgeting overall, and this should be lumped into budget considerations for next year? Even though I hate putting it off, I mean, this is a question to the administration. Maybe it's a question we should have answered in a future meeting, so the administration has a chance to think about it and give us some thoughts. I just -- I'm kind of reluctant to approve any Schedule B position that's unbudgeted, only because it means we're considering it outside the context of --
But this year's budget has been struck, but we've -- in that budget, we have considerable breakage in that budget that we have realized.
And so Lynda's actually indicated that we can find the money this year.
It's not even -- it's not finding the money. We have the money to do it.
I think from a --
I'm just feeling a bit reluctant about saying yes overall. That's all.
I think we need to have a logistical plan of what that means and what it's actually going to cost, rather than saying approximately $3,000. That we should put together a plan, find what those dates will be, so that we can move it forward at an upcoming meeting. We should have something that has a full plan that we can give you, a sheet that says this is going to be the cost, these are the dates, this is what the time would be, so that we're all looking at the same thing and really have some of these pieces nailed down.
Can I ask? Just -- oh, sorry, I didn't mean to.
I think that this is something that, if we have enough information on that, that we can move it at the next meeting, and if you're talking about it going, if the intent is during the winter months, we still have time to do that, as opposed to making a motion without all the details.
It would also just be interesting, I mean, I know that we're thinking about taking a high school teacher and paying them more to do this. There are also companies that do this, such as Playwell Technologies, and I would be interested to see if that would be a possibility and what the difference would be in cost.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any other discussion about curriculum items?
Just for this -- for this program, we have enough time to wait until next meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, nothing else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Adam, could we have the Finance Committee report, please?
Yes. The Finance Committee met tonight. We discussed a number of ongoing facility issues, including the Bartle Auditorium, which the air conditioning project should be completed by Friday of this week. We also discussed the high school auditorium project. We are in the final stages of that. Trainings have been scheduled for staff to use the rigging and all the new facilities in the auditorium. We're going to talk about the grand opening celebration in Old Business tonight, so I'm going to defer that conversation. We are also going to talk about -- what else? What are the others? We're going to talk about the pep rally as well in Old Business. We discussed that in Finance, but we are just -- we would like to hear from the full board to make a decision on those two issues, both of those issues we have talked about previously. We want to generously accept the donation of a former board member, Mrs. Faber, I believe, Barber is her name, who donated a piano to the district. And with that, I have a change to item number seven in your -- on your packet. I move the Board of Education is repeated, so just delete the first, "I move the Board of Education." And with that, I would like to move items two through 15.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Who's doing the Personnel Committee report tonight? Greg, would you give us?
Sure.
Thanks.
The Personnel Committee met this evening, and among some personnel issues, we did discuss the motion on the agenda to accept the resignation of Karen Lewis, so with regrets. So thank you very much, Karen, for all your work for the district. And we also discussed briefly the proposal that has come through to us for posting our board meetings online, doing the videos and posting them online. It's a single price tag, I mean, a single proposal with a single price tag. I think it was -- we all agreed it was interesting, but it deserved further discussion to talk about what the pros and the cons are about doing it, and we were going to take some time as a committee to talk about it over the next several meetings that we have. So I would invite you to send us as a committee, Chandra is the chair, so you should probably send her any of your concerns, either pro or con, so that as we discuss the issue, we can try to get ourselves a better picture of this topic and come back to the board with a meaningful recommendation. So with that, I'd like to move items two through seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Can you --
Oh, sorry.
Go on. I have a question. We used to work with the National Honor Society, who would volunteer their babysitting services as part of their community service commitment for back-to-school nights, and I'm wondering what happened? Do we know? I guess not.
They would still need an adult.
They would still need adult supervision.
Well, maybe not one, maybe not two then, maybe only one.
I'm not familiar with this, so I couldn't.
Susan Ducey used to -- so I guess maybe we can reach out to her and sort of try to reinstate that, because that was my recollection that that's what --
Yeah, it's been going on for a long time.
Yeah. They would -- yeah, they would. And I actually, I'm not sure, because it's babysitting and because the parents, you know, sort of are -- I'm not sure. We have not --
Because I can recall being actually at events where we've had student babysitters, and they were --
Oh, yeah, we've been doing that forever.
We didn't necessarily have adults there.
Right.
We didn't necessarily have adults there. It's like, it's like a --
Since I'm here, we've always had at least one adult whenever we had babysitting, because if there was an emergency, you would need an adult who could take control, and also it's a liability to the board not to have an adult present.
Well --
We used to do it as fundraisers also, for, like, senior class. We would babysit during events, things like that.
But specifically, the National Honor Society, which has -- which has an obligation to do a certain number of community service hours, used, I mean, you know, it was a sort of a mutually beneficial arrangement, where they were able to acquire community service hours while we got babysitting.
Yeah.
I'm appreciative that we have babysitting, because I know not all districts do. Can I ask why this is coming up after the fact? Why is it on the agenda this week? Witness took place last week. This is Bartle Back-to-School Night?
Because of when the submission was made.
So it's already happened?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Could we have a roll call?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Ann, could we have the Policy Committee report, please?
The Policy Committee did not meet tonight, and there are no items to move.
There is no President's Report. We're moving on to Old Business.
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry.
Sure.
On policy, just going back, could you explain to us all the stuff that was delivered to us?
Yes. I -- because I did not have the time to go through it with a fine tooth comb myself this weekend, but I can tell you this. When we had New Jersey School Boards Association review our policy manual, they came back to us with what they saw as deficiencies, but what really turned out to be very few actual deficiencies, really more of a pitch to have us change our service from Strauss-Hasman to New Jersey School Boards. So there were a total, I believe, of about five policies that actually needed to be somewhat revised, because we weren't always -- when we -- we have been actually fairly good about updating our policy manual every couple of years, but we have not always retyped every policy as we have reviewed it, especially if there were no changes made. And so some policies indicated they had last been reviewed in 2004, when in fact, they had been reviewed every other year since 2004, and just not retype. And now that we're sort of moving away from typing them, you know, and putting them, and so now they will be electronic files, it'll be much easier to update. Most of what New Jersey School Boards Association found was that there were policies that had not been reviewed since 2004, which is just not true. They had no way of knowing that, but it isn't true. And as I said, they found about five policies that needed some revision. There was really only one policy that actually had to have language change. It was a policy having to do with students who are pregnant, because students who are pregnant are not treated any other -- any differently than any other students, and so that policy was out of date.
Outdated.
But these are -- Susan was very good to actually go through. She sort of generated every policy that they referred to. Not every policy that they referred to had actual requirements for change. So I did not have the time to go through them this weekend. I will go through them before the next board meeting, and we can move, you know, we can move for first reading those policies that, you know, that actually need to be changed, but for the most part, they don't need to be changed.
Okay.
So that's what you got.
Okay.
A bunch of them are just missing small, small things that need to be filled in.
Okay.
But there's also the mandatory personnel policies.
I saw personnel stuff, yeah, I think that's self-explanatory, but we have to look at that as a committee, so.
Right. There were, I thought there were two or three personnel policies that had been moved for first reading, but that had never actually been --
Moved for second, right?
Moved for second. There were, I think there were a couple of those, actually.
All right.
They apparently ended up on a desk.
Okay. And that's in this packet, I'm assuming?
I think it is.
Okay.
Susan told me there were two or three policies that fit that. Susan told me there were two or three policies that fit that description.
Got it.
Anything else? Okay. The pep rally bonfire.
Yeah.
Anybody who wants to?
Okay. Well, let me just give a little background on the two. Or do you want to do it? I have the email. Do you want, do you want to do it? Okay. As I said previously, the Finance Committee talked about these two issues today, and we have two different proposals. We'll take them one at a time. Let's go first with the pep rally. We discussed that as a board about probably, I think, one of the last summer meetings, that we were approached by an alumni who would like to hold a pep rally and bonfire. Well, the bonfire has now been approved by the borough or by the county to have a bonfire at Donaldson Park. And right now, we are trying to figure out a place to hold the pep rally, and how much school involvement we would like to participate in, in this pep rally. And we wanted to know what, what I might.
Do you have any suggestions?
We did not, we do not have any suggestions.
They can't do it on the turf field?
The fire?
No.
The pep rally?
Let's off gas. It's poison everybody.
We did, we did discuss that. The issue is walking to Donaldson Park, and how we want to facilitate that.
So, is the bonfire first, and then the pep rally, or is it the other way around?
It sounds like.
It's the other way.
It sounds like, it does sound like.
Usually the pep ra, I'm, I'm going back previous years, it was the pep rally, and then, and then you went to the bonfire. But it was all here on the school round, so, you know, you had the pep rally in the gymnasium, and you just went right out over there and had the, the bonfire.
And this will be happening the night before Thanksgiving.
Correct.
And, well, let me give a little, the purpose of this pep rally is to set up some scholarships for the athletic, the athletic department, and it is a fundraising event, or a perceived fundraising event for this alumni group.
Can you say that again?
That's not my group.
The, the group is looking to set up scholarships for athletes in some capacity, and they will be using this event. They described maybe selling T-shirts, concessions, to.
They actually wanted to sell tickets to the, to the event.
Yeah.
As part of the fundraiser, to raise us money for.
And the money, any, any money, any money raised above the expenses would go to a scholarship program for athletes.
And what's the group?
It's two former alumni. It's Rhonda Dackelman, who is related to.
Dackelman of the Dackelman Field, yeah.
Mr. Dackelman of the Dackelman Field. And Linda has been speaking with Michael Covino.
Covino.
Covino. There is not, I would not say there is a formal alumni group. These are two alumnis who are looking to take an initiative, to start, to start something new, or bring something of old back to the district. This has, this had been going on, before I was in school.
Yeah.
But it, it had been going on in the district for a while.
Right. And I think it's something, maybe not even these particular alumni, but just that a lot of alumni have just always talked about throughout the year, so maybe, I'm just assuming that they're just decided to just, you know, like Adam said, just take the initiative to try and put that together again for this year, being back at the Thanksgiving football game between Highland Park and Matutian, that used to always be on Thanksgiving.
Right.
That had, that had, you know, seized for a few years, and now that's back, so it was kind of like the tradition. You had the pep rally, you had the football game the next day, and, you know, I mean, it was a very big community thing.
So, it was like a second homecoming?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So, there was, there's a past tradition of.
Very long tradition, having it then, right.
Having a pep rally, and then doing a bonfire, and then having the Thanksgiving ballgame.
Right. And then the next day was the football game, yeah.
Which we're very excited to have back, to be honest with you. The Matutian, Highland Park.
Is it here, or is it in Matutian?
It's actually in Matutian this year.
This year.
The football game.
There is, you can maybe allude to some of your conversations with Mr. Covino, but there is no specific ask in the letter presented to the board.
No. Mr. Covino is still gathering information. He is hoping to be able to come to the next board meeting and speak in public comment session to give as much information as he can. His initial concern was, he didn't want to move forward unless he was sure that there was going to be enough interest in, by the alumni to be able to support such an event. As, as Jerry said, they, they would like to charge admission of some sort, or, you know, it is a fundraiser, so there are limited ways that they can raise funds, and one would be to sell tickets to the event, so.
But that's a determination that they have to make. We're not going to be involved.
He's still working on getting all that information. They'll be selling to alumni, it's not for the kids.
Exactly. No, 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 no. It would be free for the kids. Obviously, they want as many students to participate. But this would be a way to get the alumni out to support future athletes.
Well, not just alumni, I mean, parents of athletes and all kinds.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, anyone that's in support of athletes, yeah.
There will be a bon, big bonfire at Donaldson Park, which I don't, I have to tell you, I have no clue how they got approved to do that, but.
Where is Donaldson Park?
I wish you firewalls works off from there.
Where, but on the ground.
We don't actually, not from Donaldson Park, we do it from the middle of the river.
There's going to be a fire on, on the ground somewhere. I don't know exactly where.
Put the bonfire in the river.
Right. Well, maybe, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know any details of that. But now that it has been approved for them to have this bonfire, it is, I guess, my belief that we should support them in, in that endeavor. But there's no specific ask from, from this board. I just want, we just wanted to bring it to the full board to make sure that we are all supportive of at least entertaining the thought of hosting a pep rally at the school at some, in some capacity, as long as logistics work out.
It sounds great. It sounds like a great idea.
Okay.
Is there, I have a question.
Yep.
Is there any downside to support?
It's going to, there will be, I would assume that there will be some cost associated with it, but.
Without a formal proposal at this point, there's no way to know exactly what the, the role of the district would be. Obviously, again, I think everyone agrees that this is beneficial for the, the students and the alumni, and for the town, but until we have something formal as far as what, what our role would be, it's difficult to say.
All right. Do you want to do auditorium? No, you.
Me?
Yeah, you have the conversation.
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. So, as everybody knows, and most of the board now has seen, and I'm assuming a good amount of the public has also seen, the wonderful work done to the high school auditorium and the generosity donated to make that possible. So, the board and a lot of the funders who, who facilitated the project are looking to host a grand opening for the public, for the school community and the Highland Park community in the new facility. We, most board members have received an email from Linda about a date for that, and I think we are all, I think from the responses, we all are in agreement that that date would work, and that date is October 28th. October 28th. We are now talking, we had a similar grand opening for the new field and the new project out there a few years ago. We are looking to do something similar this time. It had been suggested to us that we get the Borough Council, Borough Teen Council involved in planning and facilitating the, the program for that, and we liked that suggestion with one caveat. We are going to, we're going to ask that one board member and any other, like Mickey Landis or somebody like that, to sit with them as well as they plan the project. It will be a collaborative effort between the bor, the borough, I mean, the board, the board and this teen council that has, has apparently set up events in the community before. And the Finance Committee graciously put me as the representative to this committee if we think that this is a good way forward to plan the, plan the event, which we anticipate involving choir, the choir groups, the jazz band and some, the bands in some capacity, and the board president, and other, and any fu, a funder or two who helped facilitate the project.
Who's anticipated to come?
I think the full community would be anticipated to come.
So, and they wouldn't have to pay?
I do not.
No, this is not a fundraising, this is really a celebration, and I think that the intent was also to invite all the people who had contributed to, I mean, the Ed Foundation, which made a generous contribution, and all the people who also paid for the seats.
And there are a lot of people that this board should thank as well for the project, and I think this will be the appropriate place to do it. This project was really spearheaded by the community with support of this board, and I think those people deserve recognition. So, if everybody's in agreement with that, we're going to move forward with the planning. The board will be fully involved in the planning of it, and I'll report back to you guys.
Okay. Thanks, Adam.
No problem.
Is there any old other, hello, hello, is there any other old business?
Yeah, do we have any updates on the owl?
I thought we had come to.
Going back to the old.
Is that for sure? Was that for sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you need a copy of it, or a sample, like, or just if any?
Probably the one that was on the scoreboard.
On the score, yeah. Okay, just wasn't sure if that was like, for sure, for sure.
No, I think we have that.
So, if we want to go ahead and do any promotional things, or T-shirts, or spiritware, we can use that owl.
Okay, thank you.
We did have a conversation about having artistic students within the school doing designs as well, and having those to be considered. There is, I guess, a number of owls that have been used, and the conversation was, was there an opportunity for, to have a contest of sorts, to have an internal design. But that's, that's the only conversation that I am aware of as far as mascot selection.
So, then, it's not for, for real, I mean, then we really can't say that we're going with the old owl for now.
Well, right now, you have multiple owls.
Right. Right. There was the same one for like, forever, and then somewhere, I'm saying, maybe like, about 10 years ago or so, I think, it kind of dropped off, and since then, apparently, there have been quite a few different owls, you know.
At least one of which was illegal.
Right, illegal.
Which is not right. But, um, so that's why. So, my question is, if we want to move forward with getting anything else that would, that would have the owl.
You can use the, because we have the rights to the old owl.
So, we can still use that.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one piece of old business. It was about the letter that we received in our packets about the scheduling of Picture Day and all, different events. You know, I know we have tried to be considerate of all different religions and observances in this district, and while I tend to agree with the le, the letter presented, said that we are holding Picture Day and Back-to-School Night on two religious holidays, and I would tend to agree with that letter, and I think we should be more cognizant of when we are planning events, that it, there is no harm to planning it a day earlier or a day later to us. We don't lose money, it doesn't change anything. I mean, it's just respectful of, of all religions for, that we should be doing things like that for.
So, which religions do you think we should do that for, Adam?
I, I think that we have, I think there is a large population of different religions in this district, and that, that's, the ones that are, there are more, that are more observed in this district, that are a majority of some, this, this district should be paid attention to.
So, which ones are those?
Can I ask that this be tabled until the Calendar Committee meets and discusses next year's calendar?
Absolutely.
Great idea.
Is there any other old business? Just, what?
Don't want to talk about the.
What?
Paperless?
Oh.
Oh.
Not if we can help it.
Did you all forget?
What's it talk?
If you guys don't want to talk about.
I thought we already, I thought we already went over that, but.
Adam, how did you like it?
I liked it. I'm just, can I bring my, can I bring my iPad now to review the agenda?
No.
No?
No, we're going to try setting up laptops. I don't know where that stands, but each of us would have a laptop, too, with just that material on it without a browser connection.
I think you guys did a great job on the agenda.
It's beautiful.
It got us all the, it got us all the information.
It worked out all right for you guys, the way it was?
Although, so, but Susan, so Susan didn't send the, the policies. They were not available.
Too many.
Yeah.
What is the capacity of your scanners right now? Is it, is it an individual scanner, or is it a multi?
Yeah, I think she's.
So, but, so the thing is, some of these must exist as, some of these must exist as digital.
They all should, they have, she's printing them out from somewhere.
Yeah, the, the certain files, the financials were all generated into a PDF, so there was no scanning involved. There was one file where there were single pages, like, single-page bill list, or single-page travel spreadsheet. We just compiled them all into one scanned document and created a PDF from that, rather than giving you individual files with one page each.
But when you, when she's making copies, can't she just make a digital file instead of copies?
Well, you would probably do both, because you're asking for copy, hard copies. We do, the copiers have the capacity, the capability, but I'm not sure if we are networked yet, if the, if the hookups are there.
The scanner in the central office should be connected. It, the, the copier is a scanner as well, and I think that somebody should figure out how to connect that to the server, so she can plug in all these policies, and it goes into one document, or to multiple documents, but tracked through, through the server.
For that.
Okay, so you guys are looking into that. Because once we get this all set, and I think you guys did a great job, I will respectfully ask for no more paper to be delivered to my house.
I actually asked for no paper, and I got it anyway.
Well, could.
Well, that was a, we decided to be uniform.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Everyone got, everyone got.
But you wouldn't have gotten the policies, Jesse.
And I'm grateful.
Well, but, okay, well.
No, yeah, so once we get it, one, I just wanted to make sure in the, the scanned copy that we get this exact same material that we have in that, and that's, yeah.
So, so where does the decision stand?
I think we may.
Are we, so we're providing both paper and paperless?
Well, at this point, we can't.
Are we moving to?
At this point, we can't get everything paperless, like, all the policies this time would not have come to us paperless.
Well, there was significant conversation on our end on what the board intended, on whether or not it was to be paperless, or whether or not it wasn't, and when those decisions were discussed, or.
I think there was a, there was a time constraint this time around, because of some undetermined issues.
If the intent is to be paperless and to try that for the next meeting, then we'll make sure that that happens, and we'll have the foresight and planning to go into it. If the intent is to do both, then I just want a clear decision on, on what that.
I think we made it clear that it's an individual board member's preference, if they would like the paper or not paper. And I think we wanted to respect that for everybody. I think anything that's paperless can be printed into paper.
Right.
I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be as insightful as I can be.
Very deep, Adam.
Does, does the board not agree with that?
So, well, maybe we can have a show of hands. Who would want it paperless, totally?
Ultimately.
I'd like to try it one time and see how that goes for me.
Bless you.
This is a lot. Love, I'd love.
Although, I have to say, I'd rather be able to bring an iPad rather than have to sit with a laptop in front of, in front of me. I'd rather have the small, I mean, is that, is that not permissible?
What's the difference between a laptop?
We just have to be clear on what it, I think there's two issues. I think the, the one issue seems to be more of the concern. The other issue is, is what unit you can, you can look at it on. And again, this was a very short week, I think it was, turnaround of a day of, you know, months ago, there was a conversation about this, that this was happening the second board meeting in September, and so, we were trying to figure out exactly what was the best way to move this forward. And so we were trying to figure out exactly what was the best way to move this forward.
No, 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 I, I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, but if, if, if we are going to use the paperless, I mean, those of us who have, I, I mean, I'm not suggesting that the board go out and buy iPads, but those of us who actually have them already can, if it's possible to use them instead of the laptops.
And I'll go back to my, the objection that I've had since the beginning of this is that I don't want people using their personal devices at the board table, because I don't, we don't, I don't want an internet connection available to people. And that has to do with the perceive, perhaps a perception that there is, is a potential for any violation of the Open Public Meetings Act.
You don't think the perception, if we're sitting here with laptops in front of us is.
If they're not connected to a browser, yeah, there's no problem.
But, but most people aren't going to know that.
Well, we can announce it at every meeting, I'll be happy to do that.
How, how are we going to open the documents if they're not connected to a browser?
They'll have to be downloaded before we come into the meeting. Don't we, I think we had iPads in district, I thought we had a classroom set of iPads.
That's actually going to become even more, they have to individually download.
I think we're all adults here, I think we can.
I, I, I like the idea of getting paperless. I don't have an iPad at the moment. I had one once, but if I had one again, I'd love to bring the iPad in and have my agenda on the iPad. If I have to sit here with a laptop in front of me, instead of having papers in front of me, I'll choose the papers. There's something very different about having an iPad in front of you to browse on. I mean, I, the, we're all adults here. I mean, I think we, we don't have to have the conversation tonight, but we should reopen this conversation about people's perceptions of what we're doing when we have devices that are in use at the table. I get that there's a concern that if your cell phone is out, or if your text messaging device is out, your iPad or whatever, that maybe you're doing something that is inappropriate, like you're texting with fellow board members and violating the, the law. But if we trust each other to not do that sort of thing, and we, and we announce that we're not doing that thing, but that we have a reason to have the devices at the table, like the agenda is paperless, there's a legitimate reason then to have it at the table. I don't know that it's such a big deal. I, I, I never felt that strongly about not having the devices out. I mean, I think it's, when we start talking about planning for, for dates and things, I think it's perfectly appropriate for all of us to pull our devices out and look at our calendars. I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to look at notes on our, you know, the notes app on the iPod or the iPhone or the, the iPad. It's a great application to jot down notes and to report back to people. I don't see any reason why we can't use that to, to support a paperless delivery and, and as a medium to look at paperless stuff.
I just want to point out, there was already an iPad at the table.
Well, yeah. We, last year, we had students reporting to us from their, their iPhones, and we didn't take issue with it. And I thought it was perfectly appropriate for them to be using their iPhones to report because they had taken notes on their iPhones. I, I just, I'm not so sure I see, part, from my own point of view, I don't have a huge problem with having those kinds of devices at the table. I think it's okay.
I agree with Greg.
I would like to try a meeting of all paperless and see how I like it.
On what device?
I don't care which device, I don't have an opinion about the device.
So the problem with having, you know, nine laptops at a table that are not connected to the internet is that somebody's going to have to download all, I mean, then you're sort of creating as much work for the clerical staff as if they had to copy all this stuff. It doesn't, it doesn't really save any time, it's.
And there's a visibility issue of us, I mean, if we're all sitting there with a laptop in front of us.
Yeah, you're sure.
Much different than sitting there with an iPad in front of us.
I agree.
I think we try it out.
I was trying to find a, oh, I was trying to find a compromise. I think that on this, I'm, I'm getting to be outvoted, and I'm perfectly willing to let go of this. I mean, I don't have a device to read it on, so somebody's going to have to give me one, or I'll have my paper packet with me. But, and we can take an official vote next, next meeting, when maybe Shandra and Dan will be here also. But we, we can't, I mean, Dan brought up the last two times that we talked about this, how much time we've spent on this discussion. And it really is my red line, but obviously, it's nobody else's. So, you know, that's, that's the way it goes. So let's plan on, on doing, uh, I guess, doing, doing paperless next meeting, and I mean, in some, I don't know how, if you, if you all can work out how it's gonna, how people can use them at the table.
Not to harp on this a little bit more, but we did talk about setting up a Google Doc just for the nine of us, instead of getting everything emailed to us, so it would be searchable. Are we not considering doing that? Are we just doing, sending the emails right now?
There's a number of different options. We're trying to get input from the board as far as what the preferable option is.
I think.
We can, we can do trial and error if you'd like. We can try it, you know, with iPads, we can try it with computers, we can try it with Google Docs, we can try it with, you know, emailed versions. There's a lot of different ways that we can do this. And, and I think that the, what we're trying to do is find the compromise of what people are comfortable with, to make sure that we're cognizant of what the perception may be, and be, be considerate of that, and at the same time, moving forward as far as, from, from an efficiency standpoint, and making sure that board members have access to what it is that they need. So, there, again, there, there is no one way to go paperless. It's, it's trying to get input as far as what's, what's going to allow everybody to be comfortable with.
My, my recommendation, and it's just, again, trial by error, it might work, it might not, it might not work, is a Google Doc, because I think you'll be able to set up an individual folder for the meeting, and in that document, you'll be able to set up subfolders for curriculum, for policy, and in the policy tab, you'll be able to put in the 10 different, like, for this time, we had 10 different policies. If you just put those in an email, you'd have to search through the email to figure out which policy, you know, we're talking about. In a Google Doc, you'll be able to type in, it will have a heading, and you'll be able to, you'll be able to find it, and that's an app on the iPad to pull up those documents if, if need be. That's a suggestion I'm open, and it is no, my no red line whatsoever, but, you know, that's how I would, that's how I would set it up.
So, if I'm hearing correctly, we're going to take another shot at paperless the next time around?
Yes.
Sure.
But you guys did a great job for the first time.
Do, do you want me to poll everyone to see who would also like paper, or are we not doing paper?
Let's try to not do paper.
Everybody's in agreement, no paper.
I, I, well, yes, we're going to try, just totally paperless next time, so that, and then people can maybe decide what.
But we do have to let Dan, we, you do have to let Dan and Shandra know.
Do you want to borrow my laptop?
So, sale coasting? Just sale coast?
It might not work.
Sale coast.
Is there any other old business? Is there any new business? The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Does anybody want us to talk now? No?
Oh, I thought you had.
Okay.